So this is the beginning of the Tuffenborough Planning Board meeting. It is Thursday, July 11th. Before we get started, does anyone have any questions about general planning board procedures or how it's going forward tonight or anything along that lines? No? Okay. Tonight, we have two things on the agenda. We have a preliminary non-binding conversation with Nick Castell of LFT Property Holdings LLC, tax map for the -4-1-1. And just in case no one has run into this, preliminary non-binding conversations is basically an opportunity for an applicant to come to a board and ask questions about how things might be interpreted or site plan questions. They are non-binding on the applicant, they are non-binding on the board. Because they are informal, there is not allowed to be any plans, paper, anything like that presented to the board. It is purely a conversation. After that, we have an exciting seminar about municipal wastewater systems with Tyler Phillips. So everyone is invited to stay. It will be captivating. Before we get going, can we have approval of the minutes? I did not see anyone. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Just also worth noting, there was a number of phone calls that came in today asking if the meeting on the 18th has been canceled. It has not been canceled. We have no idea where that rumor came from, but it is on. With that, Mr. Castell, tax map, sir.
Pardon me?
Castell?
Castell.
Okay.
I don't have a lot to report. I have the Pier 19 condominium, number one, the commercial unit, on the contract of purchase. I've spent most of my time dealing with two conflicting attorneys about the declaration of mine. So we're still sifting through that as a failure comprehensive document. And the reason I came here was to just do that, maybe perhaps get some input from you about the property. I do have one question about it, and I have one concern. I'm under a due diligence period with, you know, some contingencies in the purchase and sale agreement, a normal drill. And one of the things I want to do is file for a variance for the non-to restore, the non-conforming use of the property in residential zone. The jack reminded me that if we wanted to reopen it, you know, for a commercial use, that that application's got to be made. I'm uncomfortable about one part of it. I mean, I understand that I have to do that in order to, and I would, I'd have to do it just to protect my contract to have the, I want to make sure the use is available under the contract. But I'm uncomfortable about one aspect of that. That is, I have, I don't have a plan yet together because I've also been looking for some off-site property to bring other, some other component to this, to the Pier 19 property. Have not been able to do that. So what I'm uncomfortable about is I can't, I will go down and I'll make application for zone or adjustment for that, but if it is, I wanted to let you know, in the interest of full disclosure, that there may be some other periphery to development. I don't think it's going to be contiguous lands that I'd want to link into that. I don't know, I'm hypothetically, if I wanted to do some boat storage, boat trailer storage, just plain parking, you know, it's a fairly intense use of that property down there. Everybody here probably more familiar with that than I am. And if I go forward with the variance application, I don't want to, I don't want to be put in the position where somewhere, and I make that application, and later on, I have some other develop, something that links, some other development that links to this. I don't want to be perceived as not having made that, made planning board now. I'd have to go before the planning board at some point. Don't, I, you know, it'd be highly unusual. In fact, I can think of some, some boards that wouldn't want to accept an application for one part without knowing what the master plan is. But the reason I can separate them is because whatever I do, if I can do it, they won't be part of the condominium, so it would be a separate entity. But it may, it may affect that, the condominium. So I wanted to just tell you that I'm out there exploring my options as well as doing fact finding, and I don't have a real plan put together yet, but it seems clear that there'd be some other, some other property involved to make, essentially make the math work and make all the condominium folks, I think, happy. So I will, you know, I will be back. I will be making an application to the ZDA. But anything you want to give me for history or input would be welcome. I just have one, you mentioned not to pull out any plans. I have a site plan that's the only site plan for the condominium, okay, that's recorded at the registered D's, the only one from back in 1989. The only problem is it doesn't have condominium on it, but that's the only plan. So I don't think anybody, I'm not trying to predate anybody here, but I don't think anybody was around in 1989 on the board here that could reflect on that, on when that approval took place. It's, in other words, fairly confusing. We've got a condominium site plan without condominiums on it. That's the only, that's the only plan of record on title with the registered D's.
If I remember it correctly, and this is going back purely in memory, when they condominiumized docks and how they were doing it a lot in the eighties, was because it was a little bit foggy about how exactly you condominiumize something that sat over a state waterway, they usually linked the dock to something on land.
Yeah, if you had some piece of real property.
And if I remember right, in the case of Pier 19, and this is foggy, but I think they linked it to mailboxes. I could be wrong, but I seem to recall something along that lines, which I, only reason I remembered it, because I thought it was very interesting that they linked it to a mailbox. But that was many years ago that someone told me that, if it helps you.
No, I've got, I'm aware of that. They actually have mailboxes there, but that's not the unit of denomination that they, that they drafted the declaration of condominium to use. So it's, it's, there's a fair amount of work being done on that. That's one of my, that's one of the difficulties, I can't really say what my plans are, at least, you know, kind of in a cooperative spirit, tell you what I'd like to do there because I haven't, I don't have a, I don't have a plan.
I think you're, I mean, clearly you're dealing with two different issues. One is your condominium, and what that entails. And two is the land in these portions of the property, as far as what is the property going to be permitted to be used for? And, you know, what if any site improvements may be needed depending on what the use is going to be? So, I mean, just roughly speaking out loud, in my mind, you know, hypothetically, if you went and got a variance and they said, yes, you can run a retail operation in the existing store, which seems the best use of the property, and what else would you use the building for, so I'm going to assume that the zoning board would be sympathetic to that? And you said, I'd like to reopen the store and, you know, as we're done, get everything fired up. The store was there before, the store is there now.
What was that prior, this one?
There was a store there since the sixties. Yeah, I mean, it moved around. It's in the corner right now, close to street, same building, was always there. Again, this is just me personally, in my mind, but if you come and say, all right, we would like to, you know, do, run a store, but we're also going to, you know, attempt to run more through this in the form of some other type escalation business, then to me, we would have to step back and look at the site plan and see what, you know, what are we going to do to address the parking? What are we going to do to address safety? What are we going to do to address those items? Drainage, you know, septic? We're getting into some pretty heavy lifting.
Thank you for explaining it better than I could. I, there's where my uncomfortableness is. I can go and, I think, make a reasonable case, have some ground to stand on in terms of renewing, you know, the old use, but clearly I have an intent to make some kind of mixed use out of the property. So, yes, I expect that to be a more kind of global, look at this property, look at this site, and somewhat of a site plan review, and if not, a brand new site plan review. So I just want to confirm, acknowledge what you're saying, what you're reminding me about. I don't have any more facts to offer tonight, but clearly my use wouldn't be limited to what the former use of the property was. So, we're good.
Yes.
I've only seen this one.
Yeah.
I've met a lot of people just being over there periodically that, you know, have been fairly encouraging about that. I'm not sure if the math works to just open the store. And of course, it is a very busy destination there, especially on a good day in July.
I think that's my, you know, I've driven by there, obviously, a million times, and, you know, on a hot Saturday, the foot traffic, you know, there and the cars and stuff are busy. I mean, it was concerning enough that in town media a couple of years ago, someone was willing to donate, or there was talk of donating pedestrian sign, you know, pedestrian blinkers and crosswalks and stuff, stuff like that. So I think the concern may be increasing, you know, what you would be running through the property and how that's going to affect safety, sanitation.
Traffic is, traffic is somewhat intense as it sits.
Yep.
So can I just ask quickly what the plans are with the expanded wharf?
Sure. The town is looking at repairing, not expanding it, but repairing it. And the town has awarded some grant money to do repairs to wharfs, so that's one they're looking at. So they started the permitting process, and actually by Jan Stylers here tonight, who's working on the permitting. The interesting thing is, is if the town was to take the wharf and blast it apart and rebuild it and, you know, make a giant mess, it would be a very simple process with the DDS, because it would be replacing it in time, otherwise it was a permanent notification. But because the town would like to do something fairly minimal, which is minimal impact, which is decking over a lot of the pylons that are there and driving new exterior pylons and just making it more usable, it would be increasing in width by about six inches?
Yeah, six inches. You're really just refacing the plantings the way it stays.
That requires a new application.
So the state views that as an expansion of the deck. So I think that, Tyler, if you had a best guess?
We're kind of at an impasse at the moment. We may have to go over the gentleman we're dealing with's head and ultimately get denied and then appeal it, because right now, the supervisor I'm dealing with doesn't seem to find a way that they can permit an expansion. They would consider it an expansion if it's more than six inches. So, I mean, six inches and sixteen inches is what you have to do depending on different construction techniques, but ultimately, the town just like to kind of build, put a new face on it rather than reconstructing the whole thing. But because of the style of construction, they really, you would have to either completely deconstruct it or do the space approach, and the DDS doesn't seem to appreciate that choice. And so we're trying to make our case, but we haven't made much headway. I think, I think we will, but it's, right now, time-wise, so.
All right, so there's no expansion of the town docks or the launch?
No, just repair. I mean, the, it will be, I mean, I guess technically there'd be an expansion because it'd be about six inches wider, but basically, I don't know if you've looked at them, they're fairly unusable the way they are, and the idea is to make them more like a traditional dock. You know, four bisex posts instead of telephone poles, you know, decked over on the outside and walkways down the sides where the docks were.
Well, there's a lot going on in that neighborhood. And, all right, well, I don't need to take any more of your time. I'll start copying the board with any plans, kind of per se, probably application to the ZDA and any other kind of conceptual ones.
And you can actually do a site plan before the ZDA where you can do them at the same time. There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with doing that?
Well, interestingly, the, one of the tapes on the condominium document is that they're exempt of site plan review. Okay, it's a long process. I couldn't explain the legality of it, but so I'm diving into that. I know that sounds, you know, contrary to logic. I think it would trigger site plan review if, if there was a change of use of a commercial building.
I wouldn't believe anything at this point because I think we've seen it all in the past few years, so if you've got an attorney who wants to put in a letter, we'll send it off to ours, so.
All right, okay. Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Have a nice day.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions before we take on with municipal wastewater? All right. I think it, Tyler has PowerPoint presentation, so it'd probably be easier for us to go down there. So as we've talked about, you know, we're going to be seeing some improvements probably in the near future at YOLO, municipal wastewater, and so we decided that it was a good idea to actually do some education on municipal wastewater. And we invited the board to select me and the conservation commission and, which I believe by the whole town, but it looks like it's us. So, we're in a magic world. So Tyler is, grew up in Tuffenborough. You can see he has some gals that, after his last name, he was a wastewater operator.
Luxury wastewater operator at the plant, at Wolfboro plant.
Oh, were you really?
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
I've been told I need glasses, so is this, is this sharp enough or you? All right, well, again, my name is Tyler Phillips. I was, Matt gave me a call to ask, say, hey, we may be seeing some, an application here before, in the future. It might be helpful to review for board members and the public as to what, what is wastewater, a little bit about it, kind of what goes on at a plant, and kind of the need for wastewater, and some of the basics. So I pulled together just a presentation about some of the basics, and I'll start there and I can get as complex as you want, but I think a lot of times, I don't know if you've been to presentations before on this, but a lot of times, I think there's, it's usually presented by folks who just do wastewater, and they kind of forget that a lot of people don't, they skip over. They assume a lot of people know some of the underlying principles. So I thought it would be helpful to maybe review a couple. So today, or tonight, what I'd like to do is go over kind of what is the history and purpose of a treatment plant, wastewater plant? The general approaches that are used to treat wastewater. I can run through Wolfboro's system as an example to kind of go through all the different process steps they have, and talk about, you know, some typical effluent, meaning the pollutant constituent levels that come out of a plant. I haven't gone and gotten great detail on Wolfboro's plant because, you know, I think really this is more of a kind of foundational talk to give you guys the basis to ask questions should we need to in the future. And it's not so much a review of either Wolfboro's plant or any application or anything like that. I think this is really more of a general fundamentals. So with that, start off, you know, I don't know if this is bright enough here. Excuse me.
Should the lights turn on?
Yeah, yeah, unless it screws up.
It might be even better, yeah.
So, I don't know if anyone can remember. I don't know that I can, but quite a while ago, you know, there used to be, raw sewage was discharged untreated, whether it was industrial for paper plants, or even, you know, some places I worked in northern New Hampshire, it was only 10 years ago, they were eliminating straight pipes into brooks and so forth with raw sewage in. But there are some effects, you know, small communities and small homeowners straight piping into a brook, there's bacteria, of course, but never, it's diluted enough that never really caused problems, but as you started to get cities and so forth, the concentration of the pollutants led to either toxic conditions, which would actually directly kill organisms, but also this, people started noting, noticing over time, you're having these kind of more general effects that were cumulative, and over time, it was leading to algae blooms, which can indirectly kill fish. They don't directly kill a fish, but that decomposition of that vegetative material sinking to the bottom of the lake, organisms chew up that material, and doing so, they use oxygen, they can create dead zones and ultimately impact organisms, or at least cause a decline in the habitat for fish species we like, and it starts to decline, it might go from trout to bass to carp to catfish. And you kind of, so you don't see this abrupt change, but people noticed some of these changes, and so Clean Water Act, the 972, there was some work in early, late forties, but nonetheless, there was, there were states, the federal government passed the Clean Water Act, developed the NIPD's program, the National Pollution Discharge and Elimination System, and that's an EPA program, and most wastewater plants have limits. They're not allowed to discharge water, whether it's your industry or a town that collects all the sewage from communities and discharge. You, most, you're not allowed to discharge to a surface water without a permit from EPA. Now, New Hampshire is what's called a delegated state, which means that New Hampshire actually manages and handles the permitting process for surface water discharges. Now, that's important because we're going to contrast, we'll give us a little unique example, we'll use them later as an example, but most communities are regulated by EPA and the state. The state does a little bit of their own program, whereas Wolfboro is actually just regulated by New Hampshire, and that's because they don't have a surface discharge, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So again, early efforts, mainly wastewater was focused early on at just removing trash and sand and debris and all sorts of things that got in waterways, because it was actually blocking passage of boats, clogging intake pipes for industries, so it was really focused on physical, physical problems. And if you're not familiar, there's, you know, in an urbanized setting, Wolfboro being one, let's say, or Manchester, let's say, you have different systems of collection. The catch basins you see in the street, the graded, the grates in the street, that is, that is to handle drainage, and that separates collection system from the sanitary wastewater system. We're talking here about the sanitary wastewater system. This is when you flush the toilet, use the shower, take a bath, dishwasher, all that water goes into the sanitary wastewater system. It's not, the wastewater system does not collect, or is not intended to collect surface runoff from streets, buildings and all that. The two systems are separate. You will see systems that have a little bit of connection to it, but Wolfboro's done a pretty good job, I believe, of separating them. So again, we're kind of really dealing with that wastewater, not, you know, drainage that you see in the streets where Coke bottle goes down a grate and ends up at the wastewater point. That's really not what you're, you're seeing here. So again, it was physical first, they focused on trash and stuff that was blocking the waterways, and then the next, the next item that dawned on was, well, you know, these industrial pollutants, we really got to stop them, we really do want industry, but we don't want to reverse any blue every time we're making blue tissue paper and pink when we go to pink. And then the nutrients are another component, just as, all of you have probably used manure, and manure has high, or has some concentration of nutrients, and similarly, human waste and the detergents we use, although they're lower in phosphorus levels, but the detergents we use as well as cleaners, some of them contain higher levels of nutrients, and those nutrients all accumulate, go into our wastewater system, and they determine that, jeez, you know, we don't want this getting out and fertilizing water bodies because we end up with these algae blooms, foul smells, because again, that decomposing material, and using up oxygen. So, nutrient, industrial pollutants and nutrients were the next thing that treatment plants were asked to deal with. First, it was just coarse screens, just to collect the trash and sand and stuff that you might get in the system. Next was kind of a more of a process that was a little more involved, and we'll talk about that. So, we talked about here, you know, I think there's, you guys all, obviously, the lake is an important part of the economy of this area, you know, and everything is pretty much centered around the lake. And so when we talk about lake health, I think it's, and maybe many of you are familiar with this, but in Winnipeg, it's a very clean lake, very large lake, so it's pretty dilute in terms, it has very low nutrients. It's what's called dilatrophic, and people like to keep it that way. It's clear, you can see quite deep compared to some other lakes that have algae blooms. We still get algae blooms, every lake gets some, but Winnipeg has been spared for the most part, with the exception of little bays, where a lot of times, these bays have stagnant water where that algae isn't mixed and diluted. So it's, we're starting, you start to see some algae blooms, but those algae blooms are an undesirable effect, and as we talked about, the process, these algae blooms are created, and as the algae dies off at some point, doesn't have the nutrients, it sinks to the bottom of the lake, the organisms that use it up, again, deplete the oxygen, and it can cause, cause problems. Without getting too complicated, there is, there is also another process where that phosphorus and nutrients, as they settle to the bottom, they can be re-released over and over and over again. So don't forget, when you are, if you put fertilizer into a lake, large, you know, nutrients, largely, they stay there. Some will get flushed out, but the real key is to prevent it from getting there from the beginning. Phosphorus in freshwater is usually a limiting nutrient, meaning that it, we already have enough nitrogen available, we already have enough silica, we already have enough other, other nutrients that are just sitting there waiting, and when you get just enough phosphorus, it kind of is like, like a key in a lock. All of a sudden, it allows algae blooms to occur. So typical concentrations of phosphorus, label here is P, short for phosphorus, usually they're expressed in what's called milligrams per liter, a weight per volume of water. So think of it as, you know, a pellet of fertilizer in, say, a milk jug of water. That's not the ratio, but it's, it's a weight within water or, again, a liquid volume. But ultimately, it's a part, one milligram per liter means one part per million. One milk jug diluted in a million milk jugs that are in swimming pool, a million gallons, let's say, in swimming pool, which again, is not the best example, but it's, it's a ratio. So one thing that's important is what is a background condition? What's a healthy stream? We do, we do studies on huge parcels of land up north that don't have, really have very little impacts, and we see the phosphorus concentrations, that important limiting nutrient, is quite low. It's usually .015, .018, sometimes lower than that. And so it's, what it's saying is, up there, there is, there aren't these inputs of phosphorus, we don't really have these big algae blooms. And so it's, it, what it's saying is, up there, there is, there aren't these inputs of phosphorus, we don't really have these big algae blooms. And that's true across the nation, these forests, watersheds. So you can kind of consider that as kind of pristine conditions in a stream is being quite low. Again, .015, .018. Rainfall actually has phosphorus in it. So even if it doesn't collect anything, rain falling from the sky has about .02 milligrams per liter. Matter of fact, 95%, the samples that were collected in this big study that was done in the eighties showed that majority of them are under this .02, but it's important to know that phosphorus can even come from the air. As a matter of fact, in urban settings and rural areas where you allow the dust and ag and you're kicking up actual fertilizers, you can get it as high as, as .5, meaning almost half a milligram per liter. So there's quite a range there in rainfall, but it's just important to know kind of, some of this stuff is, is just inherent anyway. We're going to have some, so it's important to kind of limit those excess nutrients if we can. Historically, in the United States, most treatment plants were, were, because wastewater has loads of phosphorus in it, has a certain amount of phosphorus in it and they try to remove phosphorus. But historically, treatment plants were attempting to maintain one discharge less than one milligram per liter. One part per million. Sometimes that didn't work, particularly where streams, these wastewater plants, after they treat the water, they discharge into a stream, it's treated, bacteria's been removed, but it still had some level of nutrients in it. And what people found was, if that's, if it's just to a stream that eventually goes out to the ocean, not much happens along the way, it doesn't settle and sit there long enough to create those undesirable effects. Still seeing concentration, we still have a high level, this one milligram per liter coming in, but it didn't really cause problems. But where they were starting to see problems was where these streams came into lakes, that water can sit there. And that water then had enough phosphorus in it to start creating algae blooms. And so, there are different guidelines, New Hampshire itself does not have a numeric standard. They don't have a hard and fast number, and this is kind of true, New Hampshire's tradition. They want, they want instead set a performance standard. They say, well, you can discharge any amount of phosphorus you want, as long as it doesn't cause an undesirable effect. And like a lot of this flexibility, that's great, except for sometimes the, the relationship between the concentration you can discharge and that which causes an undesirable effect is not easily relatable, either in time or space. Because, you know, you can imagine this fertilizer going into a brook, it creates an algae bloom, the stuff decomposes, the next year it's resuspended. It may take years for that phosphorus to go through all these cycles and transform and end up in a water body where it has undesirable effect. So how we do know, you may not know for a period of time what the undesirable effect is. So what's been recommended around the nation and even New Hampshire is to set some standards for, for, you know, we start to know what's, when the problems start to occur. So they've set standards of guidelines around the nation of about a half, 50 milligrams, excuse me, .05 milligrams per liter or .1 if it goes into a reservoir. Excuse me, not going in, you can have a little more if you're not going into a reservoir, it's staying in a brook, goes out to the, to the ocean. So, knows a lot of numbers there, but does anyone have any question, does anyone have any questions on that? I'm trying, what I'm trying to establish here is, I think phosphorus is typically the one area where people on lakes have the biggest concerns. As far as bacteria, most of the time that's already dealt with, that's kind of almost a non-issue. It's really more, the big issue for a lot of lake communities is phosphorus. So it's important to kind of understand the range, again, you start off with the cleanest at .015, that's pristine. Rainfall itself has some. They didn't do the best job early on in the US setting good standards and now we've kind of come to these standards here, these recommended limits. And even those, people always want to turn them down a little bit, but people feel pretty comfortable with these, these numbers here, these .05 and .1 milligrams per liter of phosphorus. And that's really what we're trying to remove, all the other stuff, I mean, there are other pollutants, but a lot of those do get removed at the plant. And again, for a lake community, usually it's algae blooms are trying to prevent or nuisance aquatic plants, which again, the more phosphorus goes in, the more it's fertilized and you can get some, a higher growth rate. It doesn't necessarily cause plants to be there, but those plants that are there can grow faster and reproduce and so forth.
What about nitrogen?
So nitrogen is something that was, is and really continues to be a real focus for plants, for wastewater plants. Particularly because there are health concerns with elevated nitrogen concentrations for very young children. When nitrogen gets in groundwater above 10 milligrams per liter, they found that babies have a tough time metabolizing that if they get it in their drinking water. So, but nitrogen is more of a factor in coastal areas, so nitrogen itself is not the limiting nutrient for algae. So, but it's still a pollutant and excess nutrient. But they've really linked a lot of the phosphorus to, again, it sounds, it appears to go, we have enough nitrogen in the air to already cause the algae bloom, we're missing the phosphorus. So you could keep adding nitrogen and nothing's going to happen until you add that little piece of phosphorus, it's a ratio.
So people fertilizing, eliminate phosphorus.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that, they've shown, I mean, there's, there's studies that show when they eliminated frankly, the detergents, the amount of phosphorus, and I'll show in a second, the slide, the amount of phosphorus dropped in half. I mean, it just immediately, immediately dropped, it was a huge boom to lakes and lake health. But, and nitrogen, again, is still important, it's important for aquatic species, it's more important right at its source where it goes into, I mean, has an effect, unlike phosphorus, phosphorus doesn't kill something as it enters water. Whereas high nitrogen ammonia can actually cause detrimental effects on fish at certain pH levels. But it's not.
The detriment of being no oxygen.
Correct, yeah, yeah, phosphorus will not cause detri, phosphorus itself doesn't have any harmful elements, it's just that it increases productivity in a bad way and it basically fertilizes things. Whereas nitrogen is, it can cause direct effects, but it's not the thing that's usually leading to the algae blooms you see in a, in a water pump.
Tyler, what's New Hampshire using now, are they using the .050 or are they still using the?
Well, again, so there's no, New Hampshire doesn't have a standard. They say, they say you can discharge, they don't, they don't apply standards. They're, they're now making treatment plants monitor for it, so they're kind of setting the stage for adding limits, but thus far, it's been a narrative standard saying, if you are discharging to a brook or a river and you're, and people are complaining, there's big, you know, a vat getting in the, in the river, starting to cause algae blooms or you're getting fish kills or then they will chase you back and put standards on it, they'll determine how much you can add to the, to the river or reservoir or how much you can discharge. But there's, it's still a narrative standard, so there isn't a hard standard like there would be for ammonia which form in nitrogen or copper or lead, those, those standards is very hard and fast standard.
What is, I mean, do you know what Wolfboro's, after the wastewater treatment, what theirs typically runs?
I have a number in here, which I don't know how recent it is, but I have a number in here that I, that I got online from some of their information. And I'll, I think they're, up at the reservoir, it's like .2 to .4, I think is what they're getting when it goes up to the storage lagoon. I'll show that in a sec, we're going to maybe get hung up, but I think this is an important piece here. I mean, I'm assuming that's kind of what people may be incorrect or something, but I think this is really, is the focus, most people, most people focus on phosphorus if you're a lake community. As I said, bacteria is almost a non-issue, I mean, they chlorinate the water pretty heavily and then it's, the chlorine dissipates over time in storage lagoons, so most people don't focus so much on the bacteria, that's kind of a thing of the past, but that's a, that's one of those challenges they've kind of figured out how to, how to deal with effectively, cost effectively. It's really, people are focused on the phosphorus, so that's why the little, little extra time for that. But, you know, so we go back to treatment approaches here, I think this is again, important to understand why, what, what causes the removal of phosphorus or pollutants. And, you know, we have the old outhouse, right, and what was the, what was the process that's removing the nutrients and all that? Well, there's physical filtering, as your waste goes into the hole there, it's in the ground, it's physically filtered by the soil. The soils itself will absorb, which is, for lack of better analogy, it's almost like a magnet, it'll attach some of the phosphorus onto the soils. Although at an ever increasing, you know, there's only so much binding capacity of those soils, so it keeps going outward. There's some biological action, but very primitive of course, and, you know, we've probably all seen in our camp, we had an outhouse for a long time. You know, when it was fall, you'd move it over, but, you know, or you dig, you might be digging right into the water table. You could be putting your waste, you know, into the water table, which, you know, water table, if you guys aren't familiar, is kind of underlying all land, there is some level of water there and it's, all it is, is water filling up those little soil particles, the little voids between soil particles, think of a jar of marbles or BBs. And it's all that, at some point, that water is sitting on a piece of ledge and it's sitting saturating the soil and underlying all of us, all of land is some water table. And, you know, oftentimes, the question was, was how much treatment we're really getting for that waters, you know, for that waste is going into the, into the soil. And the bacterial removal was actually organisms, natural organisms in the soil scavenging and outcompeting and kind of beating up the bacteria. And they were just relying on the physical, really it was the physical element of the thickness of soil between here and the lake to have that material removed. Usually people knew enough to locate those portageons or outhouses far enough, I guess outhouses, far enough away from, from lakes. The next, next system up is what probably most of you are familiar with, which is a septic system. And that's still used by, you know, many people today, most, most communities have that. You're probably all familiar with the components of it, but it's important to kind of review because I think, again, this gives people a basis of comparison. So, you know, again, the septic tank here, this water comes out of your, of your home, enters the septic tank and then the leach field system. So the septic tank itself is a process where water's coming in, just trickling in. And this is again, shower water, dishwater, your toilets, all this water comes in. Not all of it is, you know, poop water, it's, it's, of course, collecting everything from, from your home and that, that water's trickling in and enters this big tank where it has a chance to slow down and ultimately settle in the septic tank. So there's this physical settling of the solids, air, all that kind of stuff, metals that might be associated with, you know, cleaning your, cleaning your silverware with a metal, you know, there's a lot of different components that go into that, that stuff settles out. You also have a flotation component where grease and oil from cooking, you wouldn't want that to go out to your leach field system that relies on, on water flowing out and soaking in soil because that would seal up the soil. So the septic tank has a, has a, a way of trapping that grease inside the tank. And these, and, and then lastly, there's kind of a biological activity that goes on inside the tank that removes nitrogen and biochemical oxygen demand, which is again, kind of what we're concerned with if it was to get into the lake. That's that, that demand, it's those organisms that are using up oxygen to eat waste or algae or whatever. So, there's a lot that goes on in the tank. But what continues is one gallon comes in, well, that tank is full, that tank is always full with water. Those pipes, there's a pipe in it and a pipe out, and that water level stays right there. And a gallon comes in and a gallon then is displaced out. That is a constant, so the solids stay in there and that's why you need to pump a septic tank. Now, over time, you know, that, that does condense and it does kind of degrade a little bit, but over time, you need to pump out your septic system. But a lot of the activity, the primary, the, the, the primary means of removal of pollutants, whether it's oils and grease you don't want, you know, again, straight pipe discharge into a river, you could be seeing cooking oil on surface, fat, bacon fat that compels and that kind of stuff. So, this tank does a lot of that removal activity, that initial removal activity. And then the next thing would be the leach field system, which, again, here is a series of lines that are perforated, holes in them. The effluent that comes out of the tank with that, that initial treatment, then goes out into a ray of lines, the water, this effluent water, this kind of primarily treated water, then soaks in the ground and that has its own set of principles for treatment. The soil itself will remove those fine solids that, you know, the solids that are so small, you almost can't see them, it looks like cloudy water. Again, the phosphorus is removed primarily, in most, in most cases, phosphorus is removed when it comes in contact with a couple of different types of metals, again, think of it like a, like a magnet. Either calcium, which we're low in here, but generally, iron and aluminum, our soils have a lot of iron and aluminum and they, like a magnet, grab on to phosphorus. So, that soil, that natural soil we have is, has a huge capacity to remove phosphorus. Now, over time, all those binding sites, just like a magnet, you put in some iron finings, at some point, there's no more space, surface area to connect and you'll even find connection points, you know, the iron, you know, and your magnet connecting to others. So you have a, a pretty good surface area, but at some point, it will be tapped out. People don't know that, but, you know, septic systems, their ability to remove phosphorus does decline over time. And this'll, this'll come up a little bit in a couple of minutes. But that is the overall effect of a, of a leach field system is absorbing the phosphorus, some of the metals are removed and then biologically, again, the pathogens are removed, just like in the outhouse scenario. They're either physically filtered out or scavenged by, again, healthy bacteria to kind of outcompete the pathogens. That disposal in New Hampshire, leach fields, you couldn't, you couldn't just, you know, you couldn't just put a leach field system in a wetland, let's say. I mean, it's, you're not going to get all those effects, right, you're not going to get all that filtering effects and frankly, it's going to, your pollutants are just going to enter the water body and convey on. So you need to separate, you need to have a certain thickness of soil that underlies that system aligned. Those lines are all, all at a certain level, you need in New Hampshire four feet above the water table or with some of the newer septic systems, you can actually go down to two, two and a half feet because they, these new systems kind of create, I guess, a super habitat for those beneficial bacteria that fill off the bad bacteria and remove nitrogen and so forth. So you need that thickness of soil, about four feet, sometimes, again, you can go down a little tighter to two, two and a half. But they're relying, the state is saying, you've done a proper job of treating if you have that thickness of soil. You also have to have some distance from a surface water or a wetland. But 75 feet is the law in New Hampshire for wetlands. And it can be up to 125 feet from a lake, some communities have further setbacks, but there are standards of how, how far you are from the lake. And again, it's all based on that thickness of soil that this effluent, this material's been treated in the septic tank in a primary way, it's relying on that soil to polish and clean the water before it eventually dumps in the lake. I mean, all this water eventually goes somewhere, this, this water coming from everyone's septic system ultimately ends up in the groundwater. There's no way around it, I can guarantee all your water ends up, all that effluent ends up in the groundwater. And then that groundwater, it may take, you know, it may take 10 years for that groundwater to reach a stream or it could take two weeks depending on how close you are and how coarse the soils are. But it's that, the state has said, if you have a thickness of soil, we feel that you've done adequate job of treating it. So again, kind of a basic system, but it, most of you probably have, have a septic system. So here, didn't produce that well, but here's some typical numbers and concentrations of phosphorus. This is total phosphorus, I don't get confusing about the different forms, but so, the average coming out of a, out of a home, based on, you know, again, some shower water, some from toilets, whatever, is about six to 12 milligrams per liter coming out of a home. Big variable because it depends on what people use inside there. The septic tank, the, the material in the bottom, 200 milligrams per liter. So again, it concentrates because you think, that, those solids that go in there, which usually have a lot of phosphorus and franklin nitrogen, as they go in there, they sit, they concentrate, they don't leave the tank. So they, they kind of concentrate in, in their overall levels of phosphorus. By the time it, water has passed through the tank and is entering into the leach field system, usually it's about eight milligrams per liter. So you can see how much work, quite a lot of treatment is done in this, in a basically a septic tank. But you're still a pretty high number, compare that to what we're talking about in terms of what you really, you know, want entering the lake or try and out to this lake. And then studies have shown, some studies have shown that if you go two feet down below the leach field system, that soil has renovated and removed the phosphorus down to, and again, huge variability, but down to .01 to 3.8. And I realize that's a huge And I realize that's a huge, broad spectrum, but it can relate to what type of soils you have. If you have soils with, again, high iron content or aluminum, you might be getting treatment right, you know, within inches of that system. How old is the system? How much of those sites have been used up? And then as you get down to four feet, again, where the state says, uh, you know, you need to be above the water table, um, you're at point zero two to one point eight milligrams per liter. But after that, that's entering the groundwater and eventually is, is making its way out to a, to a water body. So those are kind of some numbers, again, that, that I think all of us can, probably most of us here, kind of, you know, I, we have a leach field in my house and uh, you know, it's, not that I think about this all the time, but it, it gives you something to relate those numbers to those, those phosphorus numbers you want to see in a, in the water.
Kyle, what do the average leach field, how long will the average leach field work properly?
You know, um, well, there's, I guess, two answers. So one is hydrologically or hydraulically. So if you don't pump your septic tank very frequently and that septic tank fills right up and you have water and you have solids that fill up and now they're flowing out the outlet, they're going to be plugging up those soil, all those pipes and the soil itself, they're plugging up those pore spaces in the soil. So you form a mat. And so the soil below it may have a great ability to remove the phosphorus, but you've kind of ruined it by not pumping. So you're sealing up the system. So you can't pour, the water doesn't want to soak in. And frankly, that's most times when systems fail. It's because the soils have clogged up. And the only reason people know they're in failure is because you are continuing to add water from your house, but it's now coming out of the ground somewhere. And you have a smell, a green, you know, really green grass and all that. And it's not, conversely, uh, or, or alternatively, you can have a failing, or you can have a system where the water's still going in, particularly like a sand pit or very sandy areas, where you can have the water goes in there great. You know, you can get rid of it all day long. You do a good job of maintaining your system. But that sand is so coarse that the water can run right through it pretty rapidly. And the sand itself doesn't have enough habitat, if you will, for, it, it can, the sites can be used up, the binding sites for phosphorus. So you wouldn't call that failure. But when you say, how long's a system last? A system could last a hundred years if it's well maintained. Or it could last, you know, systems can fail in five years if it's ill-maintained. Um, and then again, it depends on what your definition is. Hydraulically, a system that's in failure, you can, again, that really relates to maintenance. No one really knows when a system's apparently working great, but it's sending a lot of phosphorus into the groundwater or nitrogen. You don't know because no one's sampling. It's a homeowner, you know, no one's going to hassle, hassle them, those people. Um, but it's very evident when you have breakout on the surface and it smells and, you know, your neighbors complaining or you, you know, you don't want to live with it. So there's kind of two, two different, I guess, definitions. The common one, as far as people, a system lasting, is talking about hydrology. That people, over time, that just accumulates. The water can be coming in here looking clean, but just that, the, the mere fact of that water sitting there, uh, having um nutrients in it can form a film that seals up the soil and doesn't allow it to, to continue to take, um, take water. So it, it's, it really can vary. I mean, many people have systems for thirty, forty years. So now we're getting into kind of more, uh, some of the treatment plants. Um, so again, a, a, a leach field system's typically just for your own home. There are systems where if you're in a, maybe a, um, a small community, some systems where you have a combined, one big si, one big leach field system or um, you know, maybe a condo association where there is no, there are no, you know, treatment plants, there's no collection system, we're not urban enough to make it financially viable to run a pipe all the way down one oh nine A, collecting, you know, a line every quarter mile. It's just, it's too expensive. So um, people use leach fields, um, and septic systems and on a lot. Contrast that with areas that are, often what happens is people have, start off in little communities. So this is Osiphe's, what, this is Osiphe's little plant in uh, it's in Water Village. But you know, treatment plants are usually started because people have septic systems. They're so close by, next thing you know, people are getting sick. And their septic effluents going to someone else's well and, you know, things start to occur. And all of a sudden, people say, hey, we need, as a community or a village, to get together and build a little treatment plant, a collection system. So that's usually how it starts. Um, in this case, um, again, this one's here, it's in Osiphe. That's their plant. It's an Imhoff, Imhoff co, uh, tank, which is basically just a, a way of settling solids. It's a big tank that settles solids and it's very primitive. It's just screens, it's screening out trash, stuff that you don't want to clog the system. They have tanks and then they um, uh, chlorinate it and it's discharged. So it's, it's um, not super familiar with Osiphe's system. They have actually two systems, one for septic. But, but nonetheless, you can have a very basic system that really is just a large septic tank. It's a large septic tank and that's it. It does that primary step. Now, you could see how much was removed from that, from the example of, of the residential systems, the, uh, leach field systems. But there are really basic systems. The next step up are lagoon systems. And lagoons are used actually quite a bit around the nation. Um, lagoon systems are, we're going to in a second. Um, and then there's what's called secondary treatment, which is biological process, Wolfborough's is like that. And it's an additional step beyond this primary mode of treatment and it adds some, um, some kind of pumpage and abilities to um enhance and create some, some super bugs. But again, lagoons used all over. Um, some lagoons are lined, meaning they have a rubber membrane underneath them or a clay core. And it's contained and water comes in. The same droplet of water comes in, eventually leaves at some point. This is a length in New Hampshire, um, shows right, you know, uh, how close it is to the river. Um, and again, these systems are, um, balloon pro, the lagoon system uh is, has primary. It removes sand, grit and all that at the beginning. You don't want that to fill up your lagoon. The next stage is the solids will settle out um in, in one, usually one of the lagoons. The other one will be aerated and mixed. You're trying to encourage the bugs that are in there. You give them food, give them air so they can keep eating and getting fat. And then they sink to the bottom and eventually you can remove that. And then when it's all done, when you've removed all the kind of, try, the constant process is trying to separate the water from the solids. Um, that water, before it's discharged to the river, they add chlorine to it. And that's discharged right to that river, right there. Uh, I don't know where they, where they discharge. Um, but again, it's generally the bacteria piece they've, they've, they've handled. They've figured out how much they need to, to chlorinate. Um, typical values, and again, this, you know, these can vary by region and who you have on there. If you have a plant that, um, you know, makes beverages that use phosphoric acid and you have a lot of those kind of industries, you can have very high, you know, Coca-Cola phosphoric acid. It can very high um, um, influence concentrations of phosphorus. But typically, again, six to eight, that kind of matches up with what was coming out of houses. Maybe, maybe a little bit different, but. Uh, and then effluent, meaning what leaves the plant when it's done, when it's being, and done being treated, one to five milligrams per liter discharged to river. Now, they, what they try to do too is the discharge rates, the amount they can discharge is related to the river flow. It's a dilution factor. But again, you're, you're typically looking at, at, at one to five at a lagoon system. Um, and then we'll use, so other treatment approaches are secondary treatment. That's kind of considered, once you're done with that primary step, then there are other treatment plants that kind of add some other steps to the process to further enhance treatment. So we can use Wolfborough as an example. Um, it's the one I'm most familiar with. I, I did work there twenty years ago. Um, I'm, I'm pretty familiar with it as well as other plants. Um, but initially, Wolfborough was like the Imhoff uh, uh, situation in Osiphe. It was a very basic plant. Um, and it used to discharge to, um, to the lake. Um, and again, for whatever reasons, during the, the town doc grants, um, as many communities did, to enhance their treatment. So they added some other steps. And I'll go through these real quickly. So I'm going to kind of take you through the process of the Wolfborough plant. This is Filterbed Road here and Bay Street, Bay Street, out this direction. Um, Abenac U would be way up there, one oh nine A, you know, along, you know, a mile or so away. Um, water comes in, so again, you have this collection system, system of pipes. A lot of people in downtown Wolfborough are connected in. So again, all their dishwater or shower water, toilet water, all goes into these pipes. It all flows by gravity to a low point. Um, there's a, you probably would notice it, but there's a pump station. All flows to a low point down on, um, I think there's one on Lainer Street. And there's also one uh, um, day, uh, near the, uh, what do they used to call it? Near back there. So all goes to a point and then it's, because it can't flow by gravity back to the plant, which is uphill, it's pumped from there up to the plant. And there's some primary screens to keep out plastics and stuff that get into the, into the collection system. And um, but it really, once it gets on site, it goes into this building. You see up here, that building is used for primary settling. It's got a screen, it's got a system that cycles out and removes um sand and all that kind of stuff so it doesn't damage pumps. But each step in this process has a, a reason behind it. Um, so it's really coarse screening. Think of it as their, you know, real coarse screening, remove things with damage. That's the first step. Doesn't remove phosphorus necessarily. That's just, again, trying to um get stuff that are damaged out of the system. The next and probably the most important piece that Wolfborough has in theirs is the, these four tanks you can see here. These are, these are tanks that are about a hundred thousand gallons each, I believe. And these are where all the activity happens. This is where the magic happens, if you're into wastewater. It's an area that water comes in there, it's mixed and oxygen's added. And what that does is it creates a good environment for these kind of super bugs in there to do their work and remove and scavenge. Basically, they kind of feed up and treat the water. They, they remove a lot of phosphorus. They're basically incorporated in their bodies. They're eating the material and as they do, it becomes part of their body. As they die, they settle at the bottom and that's the solids. Like when you have your septic tank pumped out, that's the material you're removing. So this whole process, you're going to see, is about culturing these bugs that, that do a good job. They kind of are natural in the environment, but they do a good job and you want them there. They're the hard workers. And the whole process is constantly trying to separate the water from the solids. Once you get these super bugs doing their work, you're constantly doing this separation. But in those tanks, you get some nitrogen removal, you get some phosphorus removal. Wolfborough has kind of a, has tweaked their system to actually enhance the phosphorus removal by, by um, different techniques of, of changing the amount of air. And um, so they've removed quite a bit more phosphorus in their tank, in their aeration tanks than most systems do. They, they do a pretty good job at the plant for what, for what they have, I guess. Um, you also get to removal of volatiles, which it's not a big thing, but you know, some, some stuff that's just off gases. And again, the tanks allow for process, process control. You can route water from one tank to the other, bypass this, you can. So it really is a, uh, kind of a junction point for a lot of the system. But a lot of the activity happens in the tanks. The next are these two dome items, which are clarifiers. And this is where water comes in, the solids settle down and the clear water flows over. And solids continually are concentrated and pumped and returned back up to the aeration tanks to seed the new super bugs, the progeny that will, will live. And again, it's this propagation of, of, of bugs that do the good work. Um, also here, you remove the oils and greases, you know, restaurant, dry layer oil and that kind of stuff that eventually they, you know, should be removed at that restaurant, but it's not always. Um, so that is removed there with a skimmer. Um, this really though allows, this, it's in these, and there's, there's multiple times, sometimes it cycles through multiple times, but simplifying the process. The solids, the stuff that settles the bottom of the tank, they go up to this place here. The liquids come down here. And so the solids, again, just like your septic tank, they go up, they're concentrated. But unlike your septic tank, what they do is they press it, they, they, at least they used to. They would press it out, press the water out so it turns out like a brown material. And then they either compost it or landfill that material. Um, they will add um lime or heat or compost, by composting the heat up. It kills off the bacteria in those solids. And then that's kind of the end of that. The solids are kind of now out of the equation. Um, a lot of the material phosphorus is removed there. You know, the solids contain a lot of that phosphorus because, again, it's those bug bodies that are, that are, been tracked. The liquid portion is, comes down here and it goes through this pathway where chlorine is injected into it and it has enough time in contact with the chlorine that it has time to kill off the bacteria. Now, it wouldn't, if the solids were working in there, that, that chlorine doesn't have a chance to work. So you really kind of, it's important that each process is in its, uh, in its sequence for a reason. And down here, this process is the chlorine, this is the chlorine contact chamber. And that's where it kills off the bacteria. Under a normal treatment plant, then this would discharge to the river. This would just discharge right there, it would be done. Because Wolfborough was part, is part, all the rivers in Wolfborough, Brooks all drain into Waimasaki. Um, they determined it was, it was a bad idea to keep discharging this right into the lakes at this point. They said, we still need, because a long time ago, there wasn't such enhanced phosphorus removal and they were getting algae blooms. And it's not just unique to Wolfborough. They just had this, what's called an interbasin where all the communities around Waimasaki got together and said, all right, we're gonna, the state built the Franklin treatment plant. And the theory was that, that by the time twenty-five, now by the time we got to nineteen ninety, mid nineties, all the communities around the lake would be built up such that we'd have a sewer system went all the way around the lake and sent all the water to Franklin, where they didn't, where Franklin can discharge to a river. It's on the downstream side of the lake. And all these lake systems wouldn't, they wouldn't have to rely on an option. Where do you put the water? If you can't, if you don't want to have it enter the lake, where do you put it? Well, because Wolfborough's has a treatment plant, and Tuftboro relies on leach fields, Meredith goes to, gets pumped over to Franklin. Um, where, what does Wolfborough do? Well, what they decided to do is not discharge there and instead, they went to another step of, of spray irrigation. And I don't know, again, if you guys are familiar with this, but. So here we are again, here's Filterbed Road here. Um, here's the treatment plant, I'll keep that as a consistent item. And there is a pipeline, it actually goes up this road. But nonetheless, this water that comes out of contact chamber, again, where it's been treated to remove bacteria, it's been treated to remove phosphorus to the extent it can. Then it's pumped up to this lagoon system. And that's, um, if any of you, Abenac comes up right about here. It's a cross-country steam trail system you're probably familiar with. But that's about a hundred million gallon lagoon, fourteen acres, um, it's up there. And water's pumped up there and it stays, it, it doesn't have to stay there, but it's pumped up there through, usually through the winter time um, because um, the way they, this is really just a storage. It's just kind of keeping, storing the water until they can dispose of it. And how are they going to dispose but not get it in the lake? Well, what they came up with was spray irrigation systems. And there are lines that, that come out of here and they pump. There's actually thirteen miles of irrigation lines that flow, that are threaded through the woods here and over here. And those irrigation lines have sprinkler beds on them. And what they, what they did was they put these lines through. So all that treated water that's up in the lagoon, they would store it through all the winter, when you can't run an irrigation system. And then come spring, each time when it doesn't rain, each system would be run and would put on two inches of water across this whole hundred acre area. Well, they would cycle areas, but they'd put on two inches of water a week. And it would be sprinkled out through the woods. And it's, you know, again, had, it already had most of the nutrients removed, but this was an extra polishing step. Um, so that's one system, those are two spray irrigation systems there. And then there's three over in, um, three over on that side. And then again, there's Abenac U, just to give you a point of reference. So that's what, that's what Wolfborough had for quite a while. And I used to actually work in that system there and I'm pretty familiar with it. And they had a lot of problems with these systems, this portion down here. It tended to be wet. And again, you want that water to be soaking in the ground, not landing on, you know, a saturated soil. Uh, to the point where even if it rains, you weren't allowed to, you had to apply a net, a total of two inches. If you got two inches of rain that week, you couldn't apply to that. You, you had to, you couldn't apply any water. Hence the need for the storage. Winter time, you can't apply in the winter, it freezes up. Nor would it get the pollutant removal that you need, um, for particularly nitrogen, which is a, a, a biological process. So in the winter time, kind of shuts down. So um, they would store that water, but they started running into problems where, you know, they were often but, running up against, you know, it's March and the lagoon is full, or close to full, it only has so much capacity. And uh, you're raining spring and you can't apply water. It was just, you know, it really was not as effective as, as they had hoped. Um, so they, and again, this is where I, you know, I, this is, because I'm in the specifics of, of Wolfborough's systems, I'll tell you. So they, and again, this is where I, you know, I, this is, because I'm in the specifics of, of Wolfboro Systems, I'll tell you kind of, some of the stuff may be, this is where you may want to talk to the town, or whoever may approach town about some of the history, but I'll give you the general history. Because I wasn't there when, when this spray irrigation system was kind of determined to need some assistance, or another additional area for disposal. But I don't, I know enough about what their next steps to at least give you an overview of it. And so, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with this. So the next system was, all right, we need a backup plan, and we need a place to dispose of this way of water. Again, we can't, Wolfboro system couldn't discharge to a surface water, like other systems. They had to force the water in the ground. They had a groundwater discharge permit, regulated by the state. The water can't flow over the surface, had to go through the ground, because they wanted to get that additional level of treatment and and disposal. So Wolfboro System, again, here's the, here's the treatment plant, here's the lagoon system, we had our spray systems we just talked about. And then they can, they pumped, or I think, I believe it's actually gravity, for recycling system, but it goes, they constructed the rapid infiltration basins, which are up here, and pulls them in almost in a second. But this is the numbers you were asking about, Matt. I think, I believe these are the numbers, 0.2 to 0.4, but that's, I, I, you shouldn't, it, I'm sure it varies, number one, and I think you probably also you should confirm those numbers if, if that's of, of interest to you guys. But I believe that's what they're currently producing, what comes out of the, you got the plant, comes out of here, then it goes up here, it stays there for a period of time. And when it, when they sample, I guess when it leaves, that's about the number they're looking at, 0.2 to 0.4. Again, you can compare that to the numbers that we talked about earlier, about what you'd like to have in, there's a dilution factor and so forth, but but that's, that's how they're, they're, I think it was built in 2007 or 2008, so more zoomed in version. Again, what's applied to the sand is this, what I believe to be their, their effluent numbers of 0.2 to 0.4. Again, the, these, these RIDs, Rapid Infiltration Basins, our, our company has designed a number of these. They work, you know, if they're in good soils, they work pretty well. But I understand they had some problems up there, but you're really just putting the water onto the sand to dispose of it. You do get additional treatment. How much? Depends on the soils and a lot of different factors. I don't know what they're getting for removal from when it hits the sand surface to when it enters a brook, or surface water, or the groundwater. Don't know those numbers. But I, I, I think, again, by understanding the process, now you can kind of frame, you know, your interest or, or, you know, understanding of what, you know, what, what their numbers are and the various treatment steps that that it's gone through, how much removal they got, and frankly, probably how much removal they continue to get from here into the water table and out. Again, comparing it maybe to a leach field. Some, there's some, you know, scale issues, but, you know, scan, you can't scale it up and down, but, but I would say, it's, it is similar. It's a pretty good thickness of soil. So my understanding of the problem with the RIDs was that they found in the design of them, I think they sit, they sit pretty high up on a sandy knoll, so there's quite a lot of sand or soil for that effluent to move through. And I believe what happened is that it goes through, and then there was a lens of less coarse sand, maybe finer tighter material, call it clay, probably wasn't clay, but a finer material lens, and that water comes down, hits that, mounds up on it. Rather than continuing down and going down, it hits that, and it flows laterally, and it's saturated a slope. This one here, saturated slope, then that slope couldn't resist the forces, the saturation, and the roots, and it slumped. And I think the problem then became that anytime they applied water up there, a portion of that water then flows over land rather than staying in the soil, but it would flow over land and could reach a brook or a wetland as a surface discharge. And that's not allowed under their permit. They need to have it be a groundwater discharge permit. So I think that's, the challenges they're facing now are, how can we get this water back in the ground? It's supposed to be in the ground. You get a, so it's more of a disposal option, a, a, a problem? You get some additional treatment, but I don't know that that is the true intent of the, of these RIDs, now that they've done a pretty good job with the treatment plant of removing the phosphorus. But I think that is their current challenge of, how can we get, still apply water up there, how can we dispose of the water, put it back in the ground, and not have it pop out again? And so I, I believe that's likely what they're, the challenge they're facing. I mean, that, that's, you know, that issue's been going on for quite some time. I had a chance to visit the site 10 years ago, maybe, or when they first had a problem to see it. And I know it was quite a stressful situation. They had a brand new system that was not allowing water to go into the ground. So so that's, I think that's their challenge now. And that's, that's really it for what I have. I can go into more detail if you guys want, but I at least wanted to kind of explain what I understand's going on, you know, a little bit of background of what's going on currently. But to get all the details, you should talk to, you know, Wolfboro, have Dave Ford, or, or someone from the plant come in and talk to you about the process, the current situation. But do you guys have questions? You know, I'm just asleep. Or gross, yeah, one day.
What if kind of like Wolfboro was to put small systems with their household pumping to that system, cleaner water to the plant, and then up in?
Possibility? You mean, you mean if, if they kind of had a kind of more, at the election system level, kind of more, before it even gets to the plant, if they were to move it? You could, but you know, I would argue that if you were gonna do that, you would do that after the plant, because you think about it, the plant has been optimized for, it can handle these big fluctuations and flows that we get when people are, you know, we have summer influx of people and not, so it has the capacity, it has systems to remove that primary, you know, in one building, they can do all the grit removal, let's say, that would take every, you know, every two or three people, think of your septic tank, everyone has a septic tank to remove, you'd have to, you're, you're creating redundant-
Very expensive option.
Yeah.
What you just mentioned, what's the thought process about doing it after?
Well, I think that's, I think that's probably what the RIDs are a leach field system, but it's on the surface. It's, it, they can take a little more water. Because like a, a leach field system, it goes in, it's in pipes, it's all hidden.
If they, if they can't get the system working properly, they have to treat the water with lesser contaminants to push it back up that way.
Let me understand the question. Actually, I want to understand the question, I guess. I'm not, I'm not sure if you understand.
Well, when it leaves the plant, it's still got nutrients in there.
Yep.
If they pre-treat it again on a subsystem, then move it towards, although I know, yeah, they've got to fix the ball, you know, something that's moving around and hitting the clay. But at least if it's hitting the clay now, it's a lot less, it's more like water than it is any other contaminants in it.
Well, one, the funny thing, all these things, of course, can be done, it's a matter, you know, is it cost effective? But the thing that's interesting about treatment, and you can probably come up with analogy or example in your life, is that as you get further along, you know, it's easy to remove, you know, when you got, you got trash in the lake or something, you know, or you've got something full, it's really easy to start removing, to every scoop, net full of trash you're pulling out is, is full, right? Because it's all diluted. But when you are, now you only have a couple pieces of track, it's a lot harder, you know what I'm saying? So that, removing that last half a percent or all that, it gets harder and harder to remove that last piece. Matter of fact, I think Wolfboro was facing, to try to, when they, the spray irrigation systems weren't working very well, they were faced, they were looking at upgrading the plant with a very robust process to remove phosphorus down to, because I think originally, they were probably putting, I'm gonna speculate here, but it might have been as much as four milligrams per liter up to the lagoon originally. I don't know that, but that's, that, that would make sense, about, that would be about right. And they found by re, by just reconfiguring and adding smaller upgrades, they got the process down to a comparable level of phosphorus removal as spending all this money on a plant upgrade. So they did quite a bit at the plant. I would say the plant maybe kind of at its max in terms of, it is working about as well as it probably had worked way better than when I was there. So I think it's working pretty well now. There may be, though, we talked about all these different polishing steps, and what is the process that removes? If the process they're using now to remove the phosphorus is a biological one, maybe they've maxed out the biological piece. But is there then a chemical piece? Use a different process step that hasn't been maxed out. In a lot of plants, they add alum or iron, aluminum or iron, just like with the soils. And they add it to the plant, it helps settle out the stuff, and you remove it in the sludge. And they can get a little better removal of that. But so they could always add a step onto the process. I don't know, I don't know what they're getting for removal now between the, between the RID, the Rapid Infiltration Basins, and when it goes down, you know, what they're, what they're finding for sample results. If they're finding that it's back to the levels that are recommended, or if they want to be firm and go with the state standard, if it's not causing algae bloom, I think they'd say, well, we've, we've done enough, you know, we've done enough, why do more? But I think that samples would bear that out. I think as you sample, you know, you sample the brook, and you sample upstream, and you sample down, and you sample the groundwater. And I think they're, they're required to sample, you know, the groundwater discharge permit. So if you're starting to see increasing levels, you have a, you know, groundwater monitoring well that has, you know, a certain milligrams per liter, but this one's still low, further down gravity, and you start to see increasing levels, I would say, hey, the purpose of those wells is to act like a sentinel, early warning system, all our phosphorus is continuing to increase, and then you would have a time to implement another ramp. I don't know what their numbers are now, though, I, I really don't. But, I mean, all those things, I think, are doable. The question is, what is the, if, if I'm running a plant, I'd say, all right, where am I gonna get the biggest bang for the buck? And I grab that lowest hanging fruit. I think they have a plant. Probably, probably better to use the RIDs in the spray irrigation system, you know, it sounds like the RIDs, when they're working, and they're not hydrologically constrained, they're, they actually can take the water up. It sounds like that is a good disposal option. I understand the town, Tuftboro doesn't like it, because it's close, you know, closer for them. But I think, you know, trying to max out what you have is a good, you know, it's kind of your, your way to get the most value. But I think you really do need to, the, the sample results should speak for themselves, really.
So what they're, what they're putting out of the Wolfboro plant, like that, we were sitting on that, maybe over Franklin is, will it be discharged and then?
Oh, yeah. Well, the Franklin plant, the one that's supposed to collect it all, they discharge, I think they're discharge like a milligram per liter. Yeah, they discharge quite a bit. Like Water Row Valley is considered kind of the best plant in the, in the state. It discharges very low, to the point where they actually put it in the river, and about 10 feet away, they suck it out and use it for snowmaking. It's not directly, but it's about as close as you can get. But they're, you know, around the state, there are varying levels of performance. And Franklin's plant, yeah, is over a milligram per liter to the river. But again, you have dilution, you have, you know, so you have some, some dilution factors. So, you know, you've probably heard the phrase, solution, pollution, it's dilution. Well, down in Franklin, they have a pretty, you know, the Wimpsake River, and then pretty soon it goes right into the Penn, and makes the Merriam-Ann right there downstream of the plant, so.
I like that, snowmaking.
Yeah.
Someone have an active ski all summer?
Oh, that was, that's, yeah, that's been discussed for a long time. It's, it's, um, yeah, we worked on a project that Ragged Mountain actually considered that, but the state was uneasy about them using that for, for snowmaking. Until it, you know, they wanted a high level of assurance, they're pumping bacteria into air, and snow making guns. And it's done, although in Maine, they do quite a bit of it, but they don't do it, they just do it in lieu of that reservoir, they just pump, make giant mounds of snow, and they melt all year long, soaking to the ground. You, you don't get phosphorus removal so much from that, though. Again, it's, it's phosphorus removal really relies on contact of that, of that, with soil particles, and grabbing, you know, soil particles kind of grabbing onto it. A little bit of vegetation removal, but you know, nitrogen's more of a biological process, phosphorus is against soils. You can enhance it with air and all that at all this time, but it's really that phosphorus needs contact soils to, to be removed. I know this is a thrilling topic. Yeah, are there other questions you guys have?
I think my brain is full.
Yeah, okay.
Good information, yes.
Yeah, again, I, I think it just gives you the, the basics, so that if someone brings up terms, you kind of know what they mean. I would, the other thing is, don't be shy about stopping someone and say, well, hold on a second. You skipped over, there's a lot of acronyms in this, that people present, and, not me so much, of course, you could ask me too, but, but if someone presents to you these things, I mean, there's a lot of complicating factors. And I think it's, it's, it's not, it's not unreasonable to stop and say, well, you used eight acronyms, and mixed liquors, suspended solids, and all this different stuff. What is that? And, you know, ask those questions. If you don't know what the step is, and what's the effect of that, what's the good, what's the positive? From that, you can form a, a good basis of understanding, and a good base to ask, and make judgments about, you know, potential projects and all that sort of stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Y'all hungry?
Tyler, what's the location of the RID system?
That's a good question. I don't know. Again, it gets back to that same hydrology, you know, it's hydrologically, it will probably seal up before, the soils are all used up. I mean, we've known the soils are all used up in there earlier, but
But that would show up in the monitoring well, then?
Well, right, if the soils were sealed, like, you think of it like, someone puts latex paint into the system, and it just forms a mat over that whole sandy system. Well, the next time you go to put the water down, it's not gonna go anywhere, right? So it's gonna build up, and you can't put more water into it, because it's ponded up. So it's the, it's that sealing up of the soils, because you haven't done a good enough job removing the sealing factors, the organics. Typically, what communities do with RIDs is they scarify them. So take a light ground pressure vehicle, it doesn't want to compact the soil like a, you know, tractor with big garden tires on it. And then they'll scarify it, so they'll kind of break up, if there's any kind of crust, they'll break that up. So it's, they don't remove it necessarily, but it's broken up so that the, the water, the effluent, influent, the stuff coming in, has a chance to get into the soil and soak, in the sandy soil, soak down. But, you know, it's-
Wolfboro does it?
Do they do that? Scarify it, yeah?
I know they have it fast.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's pretty common.
They let that, that pollen dry out.
Yeah. Yep.
And then, once the absorbance of the material, the ground's ability to absorb phosphorus is used up, that would show up in the monitoring well?
You're right, you're right, exactly. And, and, you know, it's not, you know, it'd be interesting to see kind of a, I mean, their, their system's a little unique, and it's kind of perched up pretty high. You know, the systems we've done are, been in really flat areas. So, in matter of fact, they build up a mound to build the walls, but otherwise, it's just sitting on a big coarse sandy area. And so we don't have the issues of breakout of that, hitting that, because if it hits a clay layer, we never know. It's just gonna move laterally, we never see it, because it's underground. And so again, RIDs systems are, I don't say they're new, but New Hampshire's been using them for maybe 10, 15 years. And they're kind of becoming more in vogue, because they can handle more water than a septic system. You know, I mean, if you think about it, you could, you can theoretically put, mound up the water, and it will it's gonna go nowhere but down through the soil. So they can put a little more water than they can with a leach field system.
So really, if you had like a big old abandoned sand pit, that's kind of perfect? So really, if you had like a big old abandoned sand pit, that's kind of perfect?
Well, it is, it is reminiscent, right? I mean, it is, and the one thing, because it can take the water. The thing you don't know...
The imperious surface.
Well, there...
Water table.
There's the water table, but what we don't know is what is that sand, again, it's a balancing act. If you have really coarse, think of, you know, again, like marbles, sand at a microscopic level. If it doesn't have, if it moves through it too quickly, or if, you know, you ever see when they talk about activated carbon? You can take a sugar cube of carbon and it has enough surface area, if you counted all the spaces, all those contact surfaces could cover a football field, and you look and say, no way. It did, it's because it has so many, like clay, clay has this ability, has this huge surface area, but water doesn't move through it. But it has so many small little holes in it that it actually has a huge amount of surface area. Clay does great removal, but it has low ability for water pass through, so you're trying to strike a balance. Really coarse sand, you can move water through there like no tomorrow, but is it getting the removal? Maybe not as much, there's not as many initially it does, but over time, there's less binding sites. To make, to add another dimension to that, it depends on what, you know, is the sand, what's the sand from? Is it a bedrock that has iron in it, has aluminum in it? Because that's really what's doing the work. I mean, if you just took a piece of glass that represents sand, it's not gonna remove much, because there's nothing on, there's no, there's no attraction.
Before they put the system on this hill, how do they know what they have? Or do they not?
About the sand?
Do they do a core sample down, drill down?
Yeah, I think they do, I'm sure they did for the hydrologic piece, for making sure how, from these cores, you can determine what the rate of water passage is through, how long it takes for it to go for a thickness of soil, it's called saturated hydraulic content.
That would be before it reaches the ground, the water table?
Yes, yep, yep. But I don't, but I don't know is what, you know...
Well, it's not a big hill, they take a rig and they actually go a core sample down 200 feet?
Yep, and then they extract it and each one, they'll measure, there's different textures. And again, I think that was the, the big issue was that that core sample may have, if it was a thin enough lens of material, that you're, you know, you're a guy running the drill, I don't want to mischaracterize, it's a lawsuit, but I guess I'd say, you know, if you're, they missed, they must have missed that lens of material, that layer that was restrictive and wouldn't let water go through, and that's, I think, what caused the blowout, is my understanding. But, Dean, I think what you're asking was, did they test the composition of the soils for its affinity or ability to remove the phosphorus? I don't know that question. But that would be, you know, that would be a legitimate one in terms of understanding its long-term capacity. Someone may say, hey, listen, we're all gonna, you know, it's a million years, but at least, like, you know, to your point, there are these two pieces, failure can happen hydrologically and its inability to find and remove it, it's called breakthrough. At some point, there's no more binding sites, and, you know, again, we can be talking theoretically, given the size, and I don't know the others, but that would be a, you know, that's a logical question.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
It also hauled off hundreds of thousands of gallons of sand from that.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. When they made this thing.
Yeah.
Most of the journey?
They should have left it.
No kidding. They gave, I'm telling you, they hauled away, gave away, hauled away, hundreds of thousands of gallons of sand.
Really? Who did the construction?
Why did they do that for?
It's cold, man.